You are watching Access LaPorte County, Town 97. Coming up next is June 11th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan and Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www excess laporte county.org.
Okay, I will call meeting to order. Let us, um, say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Um, before we get into the roll call, I would like to just stick something in here. In the last couple of weeks, we lost a town resident, Bob or Robert Iriga, and I wanted to remind everybody that he had been a council member at one time, too. So he was a member of the town council for a, I guess, for one, you know, four-year term. And I wanted all of us just to remember the work that he had done for the town and the work he did, especially as a part member for, you know, the town of Michigan and Shores and the surrounding communities. So let's just, you know, spend a moment remembering him. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Joan, roll call, please.
Present, Douglas.
Present.
Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Ralph Box.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Present.
Rich Young.
Attorney Damski.
Present.
Gary is absent. And Police Chief Mark.
President.
Thanks. Um, Park Board President Jean Paxton.
Here.
Or virtual. Okay, BCA President Isaac Zekel.
Not here.
He's not here?
No.
Um, Samantha Arnold, we know you're here.
Yep.
Um, Ian Bob, Road Commissioner Bob Zukowski is not here.
He just texted, said he's trying to get in on Zoom.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So he's going to be virtual if he gets there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Joan.
Done?
Yes?
Bob, is that you that just joined us?
There you are.
Okay.
Oh, he looks so thrilled.
Okay. Um, I would like to ask whether you have had a chance to review once again the agenda for tonight's meeting, if there's anything you feel needs to be deleted, added, changed, adjusted, or so forth. I did add the CCG applications under new business. So.
No, I haven't had any.
Okay, then I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, sir.
Okay, Sam Paxton moves. I need a second.
I second.
Okay, Samantha Arnold seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five ayes. The agenda has been approved. Let us move on to the minutes of the May 14th meeting. Have you had a chance to review the minutes that Joan sent out to us?
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments, corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, under reports from committees, officers, and clerk treasurer, item F, report on the status of outstanding collections of fines and requires by of the ordinance, it just said the collections were turned over to the clerk treasurer, nothing new to report on fine collection. But we said that, I just want to be clear that I'm following, um, that we said we will follow up with Brad, Joe, and Code Enforcement to confirm the dollar amounts. So I wondered who was following up and what that entails. It was supposed, I think it was to sync up with Brad and Joan, so I didn't know if any, I want them to capture that, and then I guess we can address if that needs to happen.
This past month, I don't believe we've received anything. The month before, Attorney Damski had shared some info where we had asked him questions about a few, and he had shared those numbers. I believe we did not share anything last month.
No.
I believe I shared the others in April.
Right. It said we were going to follow up after last month with Brad and Joe to confirm the dollar amounts reported last month.
Okay.
And that's not captured in the meeting minutes.
No. And I don't know that, so.
Oh.
Right now, I don't know any, any others. Were there any other, was there any other data shared last month, Brad?
No.
On those individual fines? No. Okay, Joan, so there are.
When we turn it over to the attorney, we do not, only thing we do is follow up if someone does send in a collection. It's expected that the attorney, no matter who it is, is taking care of it, not me.
So the list that was provided the previous month, or was it that we shared? Joan, if we provided it to the board, so is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think we thought about there were some, there were things that didn't line up, and they were going to, someone was going to confirm and make sure it was all, that the things were aligned.
That they were what?
That we had, I thought we had.
Oh, okay. I believe that there was one issue where what we had a question whether the amount of fines that we're levying were actually appropriate.
Yes.
Something was missing.
Yes.
Okay. I think there was something raised about that, but just as an FYI, we do have a cap as to how many fines we can actually levy altogether. So although there are fines, I believe that, you know, per incident can reach as high as 2,500, I think, but we can't go over 10,000.
Okay.
All right, on some of, I believe that that's somewhere in the ordinance.
We talked about the same thing here, so it seems like we're talking about.
Okay.
I don't have the document in front of me, but the way I remember it is the Cummings situation was listed at 2,500, and we were all a little surprised because there had been ongoing, I thought there had been multiple fines.
And that's going to be, that's, thank you, I didn't capture the name of which fine, but that would be the one that was, I think we wanted to follow up on to get clarity on that. Thank you.
And I can't be more than just the 2,500.
Yeah.
So should those be captured, so anyway, okay?
Right. I mean, and that's a specific instance or it's litigation.
Okay.
I'm confused. Is there a cap on how many, how much dollar amount we can fines on an individual for the same repeated fine?
Not under state statute unless you adopted something.
I think that there was something in our, now, I may be completely wrong, but I thought that I remember reading in our ordinances that we had some cap.
If you'll give me the.
And these were old.
Who's going to say, if you give me the ordinance number, I can pull it up and send it to you.
Oh, I don't know the ordinance number, because I would have been reading it in the, in the old.
I'll read the ordinance book. I've got it.
Okay.
Copy of your ordinances.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the only other thing I had to add was on unfinished business, where a tree, degree removal, additional bids, and the main motion had passed to award the bid to Sandcastle, but we said it was going to be carried out by end of June, and I don't know if that's, I assume that was part of the motion that, and we didn't document that in the meeting notes.
Uh, yeah, that's right. You, you cleared one of the areas.
I was just saying, in the meeting notes, it should say that we passed the motion and Sandcastle agreed to complete it by the end of June.
Yes.
And that doesn't capture the meeting notes, and I figured that should be in the meeting notes. That's all.
It's in there, it says Nick Wolf mentioned he could do the brush by the morning day in the trees in June.
Yes, that's the correct.
It's already in there.
I see you want the motion to get that into my mind. Well, there it is, okay. I was reading very quickly because.
Okay, yeah, it is in there. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or corrections?
No.
No. I would just like to make a comment, and going back again to that, on reports F, I said I, I was never involved in collections of any kind, and citation collections. I mean, Deb was handling that, I had nothing to do. I didn't write it, I didn't collect, I didn't distribute, I didn't do anything. So I think that, I don't know where that came from with my name. So. I got a report on them here in, you know, at the meetings, but I, and even before.
That's from Deb Shepherd's help.
But I did not, but I did nothing with regards to collections, conversations, and so forth, that that was, that was it, with Deb, not with the, so.
That's not what I was talking about. I was just talking, it was handled by Deb and you.
I didn't handle citation collections. I didn't handle anything.
Okay.
So I, I can't say that I did, because I didn't handle it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, and if so, then we will, with these, this correction, here to, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
The, uh, the one change.
Okay.
With what?
With the change that Samantha brought up.
Well, I would like to have my name removed.
You're making a change.
You were just getting a clarifier.
Yeah, yes, but I would like my name removed from there, because I never had anything to do with the collection, with the citation.
Okay.
I don't understand Samantha's.
I retract that statement.
Okay. F, from under the reports. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the five ayes.
Just please repeat the motion.
Okay. Ralph Box moved to approve the minutes as presented with the removal of the name Diana Dumbrus under F at the top of page two.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Sam Paxton seconded. Voted in favor. Okay. We move on to the reports from committees, officers, clerk treasurer, invoices, claims, please.
You have them all sent to you?
Yes.
Do you want me to read them?
I, I think that, you know, if every, has everybody spent some time looking at them and reading?
Oh, I just got them, so no.
Uh, this is, okay.
Okay, I'll read them. AT&amp;T for the landline and internet, $80.14. Chase Card Services, oh, $878.78. Report County Treasurer, $7.50. There was one of assessments for, along the trail, for the ditch assessment, that doubled. I don't know why they doubled it, but that's what that means, for $7.50. Matthew Gistro, $125, that was for security for BCA. Bradley Damski, that was for legal, $1,202.50. A.D. Voice, that was for Sensationary, $13.86. That was Balance for Little Horns. Friedman, I've read that one. Jim McKay, $197.50. We had set up something with the Sonic Wall, we need to check that out, and he set up the new LexAur USB backup for us. Nipso General Garage Heat, $142.61. And Signature Lons for the lead pickup, $7,844 for grand total of $10,620.39.
Any questions?
What was for the, what's the Sonic Wall?
He came back and did some checking on the Sonic Wall. We have a Sonic Wall.
What is Sonic Wall?
That's for cybersecurity.
And then why did you need a new USB backup the other one day?
The USB backup is because we decided to separate the financials that we do with Keystone for all their programs. We decided to do a double backup and just have them separate, so we back it up twice in case there's a problem.
Sure.
Does that need your approval?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay. I just wonder, I was curious.
Joan, is that the Nipso bill, like when we get it at home, it's electric and gas?
It's what, split?
No. When we get the bill at home, it's electric and gas. Is this for both?
It's for both. Yeah, it's for, when we do it the way you liked last month, when I did it this way with the vouchers, it's a summary, not individual.
Okay.
For each item. If you want to know what each item is, I can tell you, I think.
For Nipso or not?
Yeah, for Nipso. Nipso for lights for the garage, that's $51.46. The streetlights, $20.63. And heat for the garage, $70.62. We could probably say that they just shut it off, but I don't know if they, if we have anybody that's going to be responsible for that, because we certainly don't need it in this kind of weather.
Any questions with regards to the vouchers? If not, then I need a motion to approve.
Oh.
Okay, Rich Young, and was that Ralph seconding? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, and these may additional vouchers have been approved. Let's move on to the June vouchers.
Mm-hmm.
Can you need mine? There we go, Joan.
Yes. No, I got it.
You have it, okay.
Okay, go ahead and read Jim's vouchers for you. Nick Wolf for mowing Creek path, $225. Michigan and Shores volunteer fire department, $105 for rent. Mick Wolf for grounds maintenance for the parks, there was a crook, and he did $150 of that. AT&amp;T for the telephone, $13.13. Brenda Heckman, $36.18 to travel, post office and bank. Comcast, $174.30. Michigan City Doors Garage, they completely rebuilt the door opener in Aldi. Paraphernalia that goes with it is $1,210. Volunteer Fire Department for our fire public safety, which was $3,755.17. And Mick Wolf for the trailer, part he did on the trail, partial payment. He has the stone, and he's getting the stone laid, and there's still more that he has to, to purchase for it. Pioneer Lumber, bytuminous materials for paving, $386.30. Republic Services for refuse, $4,892.88. Town of Long Beach for police protection, $5,691. A grand total of $21,368.56. And just spoke with Comcast today, we are going to have this bill awarded a good $50 to $60.
All right, any questions or concerns about these vouchers?
No, I make a motion to approve them.
Okay. I need a second?
I second that.
Okay, Samantha Arnold. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, Samantha Arnold.
Yeah, Ralph Box moved, Samantha Arnold seconded.
Thank you for repeating that. I have another bill here, and it's from Brad Damski. We did not get it on the actual list, we had it all printed up beforehand, and the only thing that I thought I had given here, but I don't know exactly what the extra services are, but we've been getting billed in advance for his retainer, and we're not supposed to be paying a bill in advance, but if you'll approve, do you remember what you billed?
$675 a month for the retainer.
For the retainer, but what would be extra services? Do you recall?
For May or July. Would we go?
For May, yeah. I mean, you'll, that's all right, if you build May for June, and if you would build just like now, then I can pay up.
But I would go with the extra services, we'll keep it for the end of the month.
No, they'll probably have to do two different bills.
Right.
Because.
Well, we're prepared, we'd like us to send the retainer at the beginning of the month, we can do that, but I think what we've been doing is just capturing it.
Yeah, but tap it on the end, and we're not really supposed to pay in advance. So July is way in advance, so if you would give it to us, so we have it for the first meeting every month for the extra services.
Yeah.
And then add.
Both these extra services took a month prior, right? But that's.
Right, and then you could put Jim on it, but this bill paying through, it's got July on it. Then have it for July retainer.
July retainer.
Uh-huh.
That shouldn't be accurate, so.
Okay, then I'll get with your.
With suit.
Yeah, we'll get that for them.
Yeah, there's documents, so we should be building the next month.
So what I'd like to have is approve his, their billing, and I don't remember exactly what the amount is, because once we don't pay up, we put it in the next.
I.
If you want to, for the extra services.
Wait until they get the bill before they can prove it.
Okay.
We shouldn't have put a blank.
I, I trust you guys enough.
I don't watch.
You know where it's filed, yeah.
The way they're spending money, you better watch.
Well, you just had your tax drawn.
Yeah, we needed it, too.
All right. Any other questions? Everybody good on this thing? Okay.
Okay, so we need some signatures. Did you sign with Brad?
Yes.
Thank you.
If that was the minutes, yes. Okay, we won't, I have, we have no resolutions in ordinances today, unless I've forgotten something.
Are we going to get a collection update?
Oh, there we go. We do need a collections. Thank you, Sam. Okay. Joan, do you have anything for the collections update? Outstanding collections of fines?
Nothing that I can, everything is in print, or the same as one of those last month that should, billing was added on to that everybody received.
We received six more bills, six individual bills. Grand total of all of them looks around the $35,000. So we are from 400, eyes, 900, and then 480.
They're the same as last month.
Right.
There's nothing to change, they're the same.
So they're not new from last month?
No, these are the same amount. It's about $3,500 total. So it becomes a quite annual question for the board, how they want to, to do all five small claims actions, and spend $115 on each of those actions, plus putting these.
I don't know what the, I mean, obviously, we'd like to keep it, you know, with the least expensive, you know, option. Is there a way to say that we are sending, would it be worth our while to send it out, perhaps from here with regards to, like, certified mail, saying that the next letters are going to be coming from the attorney?
They already have that.
Oh, they already have that, okay.
This is filed with us, that she said.
Okay. We can, in control.
Okay, all right.
The next question is how, how do you want me to pursue? We could send, you could send a collection letter ourselves, maybe a firm letter that says, you know, this is not serious, you got to pay there, you're going to sue. That's one way, it might be a cost at the beginning.
Okay.
You know, send out six letters, five or six lawsuits, but these are all small claims. I mean, it's, if it ever gets to the suit, the point would be to file them all at the same time, consolidate effort, consolidate court time. The way small claims works, and we're counting, the attorney was filed, a date is set that the defendant is to call in to the jury's office, to either admit or deny the claim. They admit the claim, then, you know, he's out of payment arrangement. They deny the claim, then it gets up before their hearing. If they don't call in, you just issue a default order. It's not like it's labor intensive, your, your biggest cost is going to be the filing.
Well, I would be in favor of having you send them letters.
Yeah, to start off with that.
I, I agree, but I also think you ought to explore other options, including, for your, your, your agency.
Currently what do you feel like?
We should explore other avenues of service, like, currently the order for collection service.
Still.
Peter on your credit file, it's a motivator for people to do it.
Oh, that's true.
And the fee that they take is off the top, and, but it is better than just having $3,500 sitting out there, and giving people the satisfaction that they know that they're not paying the debt that they owe. I would be curious if Chief Switzack has any experience with the Long Beach policy with collection services, or how you're handling any type of.
We have filed the same advice as your attorney, that our town attorney first sends the letter, and then that does not have beans and ground, then we would file now some small claims, but we know not in recent years.
Yeah, it just gets possible in some way, to go through the terms. Collection, I mean, collection companies, you're right, are starting to do it on a contingency basis, considering the volume, so again, whether you'd be able to solicit somebody to have these services.
Yeah.
You know, that's something hanging out.
Okay. All right, thanks for the suggestions, then. Okay, so, but first, we're going to go with a letter then from the, from the law firm, so that way, do we need a motion for that?
Send those out with a two-week demand. If they don't, we'll be primed by the time you guys, we have our next meeting, or I'm going to talk to attorney first, I'll possibly give an executive session of order around the July meeting, so then you can decide how you want to proceed.
Great, okay. Should we do this as a vote then, officially or not? It should be, we just gave direction, pardon?
I'd be more comfortable to show up the minutes of the vote.
Okay, so I need a motion for this, that we're going to send a letter first from the attorneys.
Make a motion that we enlist, we're at a fantasy to send a collection letter to the list of the commissar past year.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All right. So Sam Paxton moved that we should send, have the, Brad Damski send letters from the law firms letterhead to these outstanding fee holders. Samantha has seconded this motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it, and motion has been approved. Thank you very much. Okay.
I have more things, clerk. Uh, we received, I don't know if, everybody knows, we have this hail and damage on the garage roof.
Yes.
We have the insurance check, Bob's not here, so, but are you listening?
Bob is here, he's here.
We did receive a check, they deducted depreciation on the garage, plus $1,000 deducted. Had a total for the contractor was $16,000 to do the work.
I just want to make a note, I have a theory on the thing, and he asked to go receive the check, but he didn't, but this was Monday.
We just got it.
That's fine, he, he just needs to finalize it with you, and get it deducted, or he'll get it on to plan, he'll get it done.
Okay.
Since your order, you have to sign it, too, and tell me. Are you meeting group, get it?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Before we move off of, for a quarter, are we going to have any input and visibility into the budget setting process?
You better believe it.
What I mean.
But that doesn't mean everything you want you're going to get.
I didn't, I didn't.
I'm just saying that, yes, we always have a meeting.
Well, then, where are.
Are you meeting group? Get it?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Before we move off of, for a quarter, are we going to have any input and visibility into the budget setting process?
You better believe it. But that doesn't mean everything you want you're going to get.
I didn't, I didn't.
I'm just saying that, yes, we always have a meeting.
Where are you at in the stage of the budget?
I'm nowhere. I haven't even started.
Okay.
I'm trying to collect data from last year and this year because we're way over budget for this year, which means we're going to have to do additional appropriations.
Do you have the date of the meeting planned?
Nope.
Not yet?
Not yet.
All right.
When does the budget have to be submitted? September?
I don't have the actual times because we have to submit it, has to be advertised, and then we have to have a public meeting and all that goes into it. Then it has to be submitted to DLGF.
But that's fine.
They have to approve it and approve it or disapprove, whatever. Last year we had to ask for them to put something back in it that they took out and they did put it back in it.
Submission is typically in October and you kind of work backwards from there because you have to have two public meetings. Really, you shouldn't start it until the end of June because one of the first things you're looking at is, well, you're expensive in your income through June. So you don't have that number of that.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, I remember writing the past, we've had that first meeting in June.
July, I think it's been in July.
July. July.
The townships I work with, we usually start our meetings with them in July and bring in their record within as far as in their accounts early to July so then they can have their meetings all this September, make sure they're not going before October. Your, your budget's a lot more complicated than that. It's the same time frame, same calendar.
Okay, in July. All right, thank you. Let us now move to departmental reports. Please, Chief Mark Switzak, please.
Good evening, everyone. The Long Beach Police Department during the month of May responded to five hundred and three calls for service when compared to three hundred and fifty-four calls for service in the previous year for an increase of one hundred and forty-nine calls. During the month of May, twelve incident reports were documented, a total of six individuals were arrested, three misdemeanor arrests for operating over a vehicle intoxicated, two misdemeanor arrests for driving with suspended driver's license, and one misdemeanor arrest for possession of marijuana. Specifically to the town of Michigan Shores back on May twenty-second, Corporal Matthew Farley, while conducting radar patrol on El Portal, stopped a driver for thirty-seven miles per hour in twenty-five mile per hour zone during a traffic encounter. It was determined that the forty-one-year-old driver from South Bend was operating the vehicle without ever receiving a driver's license, was issued a citation and any traffic report to date. I spoke to the road commissioner, Bob Sokowski, he has ordered the poll to install the new radar speed sign, so that will be installed here once he receives that. Just so I'm letting you know, we are getting ready for the end of June, going into the first week of July. We have a workout scheduled for the last week of June, and then July third through the eighth, we'll be seeing additional patrols throughout town because we're ramping up our additional summer presence during what we determine to be our two peak weeks, usually the week before and then a couple of days after July. So we have several extra deputies on each evening and they will be assigned over here as well. So, and during that time, I also encourage everyone, if there's anything that you see or hear in neighborhoods, please call us, give us the opportunity to look into it. We'll also be conducting beach sweeps as well for underage drinking during those time frames as well. So I wanted to know with the public, hopefully cut some of that off before they get down there and if there was any issue, but we will have an extra presence.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, chief. Let us move on to the fire chiefs' report. Bob, are you going to give that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Two hundred and seventy, one hundred and forty-three hours for the month. Meeting throughout the month, general meeting, business meeting, training session, truck maintenance and training meeting. On the fifth, at eleven eighteen, there was a medical call, machine drive. The eighth, at seven fifty-two, was sound, human, with wires down. On the tenth, I'll add a trail for medical call. On the eleventh, I'll add a trail for human call. On the eleventh, sunset trail for lines down. Thirteenth, market trail for a hundred call. Fifteenth, a sound market for bodies down. On the twenty-first, three roll, two lines down. Twenty-second, I'll add a trail, the lines down. I'm sorry. On the twenty-second, was the pilot, the trail was the previous suburb club fire. We lucked out on that, it was at that place that it dealt with, it was on the south. Luckily, it happened on Wednesday night, we were all stationed when called. They helped us respond to that. So on the polls for the month, first responders, Michigan Shores, three. My, uh, special votes. We were also late to mention that one partner, who passed away on Friday, it's from Ford's, the name of Bob Rodriguez, who was a member of the fire team for many years, holding off the chief assistant chief of tracking officer and first responder, who was a member of the Indiana Fire Department Association for over fifty-five years. He served with district chairman for over twenty. Back to this.
Thank you very much, chief. Okay. Let us move on to the next part. My chance, as I step in for what Deb did. Rich, did you get a copy? Joan, I don't know, I sent the copy of the report, I don't know if Rich has one. You do? Or you do not? Pass this down to Rich, please. Joan, do you need a copy? A paper copy? Commissioners? Building commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. These are the permits that were handed out from probably the beginning of April through almost at the end of May. There was a few there at the very end of May that are listed yet. And that's only because I think that there's two, I'm still chasing two down and I am missing numbers for, for two of these here that I have to find my papers there. But we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven that are completed here. Like I said, two more I'm chasing down because it's just the numbers and then there's, so that means this would be thirteen and I've got two more that still owe a fee for permits and they have not submitted that yet, but I'm, you know, still making them bring that in and then, you know, issuing a permit officially that they would have done it the correct way. They've been cooperative, you know, I believe, but I, and I'll check with Brent on Friday to find out if the money has been received. Regarding the charter rental permits, eight have been renewed, one is late in renewing, four are still good for this year. In other words, they're, they're expiring at the end of the year. One has never been used and one was just newly approved in May. So among all the building permits, we have thirteen, fourteen, fifteens. There's actually seventeen currently issued, one of them has never been applied for and then the last one was the, the one that was approved in May. I didn't even, I'm including that one. I believe there's, oh, I forgot to add, there is one that is still in the process of being renewed, but they had to submit some other information that was still missing, so. Okay?
On the, on that is late renewing, that would mean that it would be required to go through the whole process all over, right?
I don't, I don't want to say, yes, it depends on how late this is. I think they're given.
They have to apply many days before the expiration.
They should do that, but.
It's in the.
Yes. Okay. And, but we have, we've never had someone, I think, and I don't have any paperwork on that one. You know, I'm not going to say the name right now, but we don't have any paperwork that was handed over from Deb. I checked the files and I checked the paper copies. So I need to find out whether they're renewing at all or not. And if they are, then we'll tell them. They would have to come to the town council.
Why is our responsibility to even reach out to them? Why don't you?
That's what the building commissioner code enforcement officer did. When they did not, when people did not, you know, apply on their own, she reached out to remind them that they were past due or that they were doing. This is what she did this year. I'm just relating what she did, so.
I mean, I, I think if the ordinance is written that requires them to reapply for ninety days to expiration, if they don't do it, I don't think it's our obligation to reach out to them.
Well, they have ninety days after the hit that we rolled in. It's not ninety days before.
No, it's ninety days to before.
Well, you know, let's just, let's read through that again. They should begin starting, but I think that, I thought that Ralph was correct in saying that it was, you know, that they had a grace period of trying to fix it up, but let's take a look at that then. I don't want to say yay or nay on it because I couldn't say it one way or the other. I know that there's a ninety day period and I just, you know, this is what Deb had done at the beginning of the year because I remember her saying that when it came up, that nobody had yet approached her to renew their permits, you know, as the year was beginning. I'm not saying we should let anybody go on that or whatever, but let's take a look at that to make sure and.
Yeah, you have to verify things like they did and try to communicate to Deb.
Right.
In this interim period.
Yes.
There could have been some lost communication.
Right.
Be pretty careful.
Yeah.
We don't have an official, we forced them to.
Right. And she's been gone almost to, what is it, April, May, it's two months?
I think I might about the.
The renewal process must begin before ninety days of the permanent expiry. Permit is terminated if the expiration date is within ninety days and no action is being taken to renew a permit.
Okay, so that means you start thirty days before, but you have a thirty day time period. I mean, you get, I mean, ninety days in advance, but you still have ninety days, you know, to get it done. After the expiration date, correct?
If the term, term, if the expiration date is within ninety days.
Okay, so meaning just before or does that include after? So let's say somebody was March twenty-third. I'm just, you know, I'm pulling this out of my head. And they, and now being June, what is today, eleventh, so do they technically still have twelve days at this point to try to do that?
Termination, terminated at the expiration date.
I think you take it off my line and then.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Right, I think so. So we'll take care of this on, you know, going, we're not going to decide this right over here now, so let's just put, I gave a report of what was taking place, you know, so. Okay, I got that done. All right, let us move on to the next, code enforcement. Okay, I had nothing else to report regards myself. I wasn't doing really code enforcing except for chasing down buildings, code laws, and that was it. But I did not do other kind of enforcement, I did not get into that. I don't know if anybody else is renting anywhere without permission right now, I didn't go looking for anyone, so if anybody notices, let me know. And then, you know, we can make note of something. Let's move on to park board. Jean?
Hi, David McLeod, Michael and I are in Huntington, the director of Indiana Land Protection Lines. This is the State Association of Land Trust. Indiana walked the nature trail and provided a wealth of information. Park Board member, Amy Black, has been in communication with the N O about grant opportunities associated with the White Ditch Greenway Park. So that is a very promising avenue, possible grant money in the future and also with regard to the task that you have to conserve of the conservancy area. So we're making progress on that. We cleaned sand, was placed in sandbox at K K Park, cleaning all just placed around the Zico, the Tetherwell Ford and select places. We received all the input back from the surveys, we've only unfortunately got eighteen park boards surveys back by the, the ideas that he had before were, were attached, pick up for us, those were very valuable to some of the residents. Keep the old playground equipment. That equipment is treasured by a lot of people and then keep these parks as a natural park and more of an nature respite. Joe Lewis ordered trash and recycling containers for both parks. A redwood tree was donated for at least parking planted. Skip Michael and his crew has brought the benches back under the tennis courts that is important to our planners and plans were donated to place the map sign following the parking lot. In the last meeting, the board will be meeting on June nineteenth at five thirty in the fire house to start forming our budget and I would like to ask the clerk Trish to come for her expertise in it. And my only question to the council is that, I know the boosters, the boosters are separate now from the town, but they use a point of hand through the parks and the natural areas. And I was wondering if the council would like any kind of recording from the neighbors at the knees? And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have questions for Jean? Not at this time? Okay, thank you very much. All right, let us move on to the road commissioner. Bob?
Okay. Throughout the month, I didn't have the total of the hours. Put in eighteen hundred pounds of patch, radar side post, start work. I ordered two hole, wanted to go on El Portal and wanted to go on Intensive Park. To go around, uh, the area, to replace the old track, the ice all over. And then the church is covering the roof damage to the town road, so that's all I got.
All right, Bob, how is, how's it going with repairing some of those potholes?
Uh, I could probably, I could probably get another two thousand, I'll still be short. Some of it, I've got a whole lot of ways to see what I can do this CFT meeting as far as what we're going to pay for this.
Okay. Right.
The worst of those is down in Virgil, the portal.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I could not handle about the water standard front of the driveway. I went and put a little bit of patch in that hole that's not going to last, keep the washing out of the hill.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, fine, man. All right. Advisory plan commission, Isaac Zekel is not here. Would someone else like to give a short report on what to place at the plan commission?
We approved a preseason report at two ten.
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen, yeah.
Two fifteen, Mark.
Okay.
Okay. And we discussed the trade ordinance that's in under works, making progress there. We may have something for public review in a couple of months when I, like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Matt Bowen is not here. I did not get any kind of reports or other news except to say that the next meeting will take place July twenty-fifth for the BZA at six thirty P M. July twenty-fifth, six thirty P M.
Six thirty?
Yes. Okay. White Ditch Drainage Board, I attended the meeting this morning. We were not on the agenda, which is always good, but I did notice that there is a branch of some kind in the ditch east of El Portal, so I will be contacting, I thought I saw it earlier this morning, but when I came home, I actually walked down to take a look and there was a branch probably directly behind the, I think, the Perez residence. So I will report it tomorrow morning to the, to the drainage board because this is part of the drainage ditch that they are, you know, keeping clean. So I wasn't knowing what was taking place. Website and technology. Website and technology.
The website continues to be a great channel for everybody to communicate. We've got, compared to last year, we've got, traffic is up like 75%. I might look in, it looks like it's all still real traffic. I was going to look and see if we have any bots hitting us. That's not a security risk, it just can slow your site down. But I don't think that's, based on the flow of traffic, doesn't look like that. 70% of the people visit our site on mobile phones. So at some point, it'd be great to get the ordinances and the municipal code ordinances in HTML as opposed to PDF, because it's really hard to read PDFs on your phone. And people do send a, a lot of questions they have is about the ordinances, which if they're on their phone, they can't read them.
Right.
That's just a note. And while garlic mustard hanging there, the number two page on the site. You can tell it's getting to be beach season because now number three is a very basic page, we have about stop 37. So you can see the seasonality even on our website, so that's all.
All right, thank you very much. NERC, I attended an environmental group meeting last week and that one was working on putting together application forms for various grants. But those grants are always tied into things that have to do with traffic and driving. So because we are not on a public road, our biggest public road is the old Grand Beach Road. But, you know, potentially if we got together maybe with another community or we can, they said we can even try to do something that, anything that would have Reed Space Forest and whatever, maybe planting is on our old Grand Beach Road.
What does the standard stand for again?
Northwestern Indiana Regional Public, Northwest Indiana Regional Public.
Commission?
Planning Commission, yeah, and Space of Hand Roads. You know, a lot of it has to do with roads.
Gotcha. Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission.
There we go, thank you.
I was just curious.
Yeah, Lake Porter and the Port Counties.
Gotcha.
You know, and so anyway, that was NERC's general meeting will take place the 20th of this month, 20th of this month. So maybe there will be something more to do. The one thing that did come out of this is, and I will add it to what Jean mentioned over there. The coastal grant program, you know, is available for us to look at to help us with things that deal with our parks and our, you know, nature paths along the ditch. So that's, you know, a valuable source.
In fact, that's how the ditch trail and big slope became.
Yeah, the coastal grant, and there's a lot going on with that.
Yeah, so, you know, so that they're available for stuff for us to continue to do. But, you know, it's nice having the park board working on that kind of stuff now rather than, you know, just people in the office all the time. So, okay, let's move on to unfinished business. Leaf removal, contract payments, anything in progress?
Yes. What can you say?
In progress.
In progress?
Yeah.
Is it something that we can? Do you have a synopsis of what they have to handle?
If I had that, I would give it to you today, but no, I do not.
You don't, okay.
Michael did forward some information.
Yes, yeah, I tracked some more down because it wasn't accessible, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I'm going to do a little more.
Okay, all right. Where do we stand on that? Well, I guess we've heard, on the train debris, right? Where we think?
Yeah.
There are two remaining areas, both on Bertham. There's brush and debris in one section, and then there are dead trees on town owned properties in remaining areas. I saw Nick clearing the most obvious one today. He finished clearing the other concern before in the morning. They were doing smaller items and then bigger item, the bigger truck or tree that fell. He cleared that, Ted. Yeah, so that'll look better. And then I'll be in touch with him to make sure that we're still on par with the rest.
Okay, all right, thank you. How about, Bob, how's it going with the, or Sam, you would give us this, not about purchasing of the equipment.
I checked with Bob earlier to see if he had heard anything, and he has not. It has been ordered, the Florida law mark has been ordered. It was going to take 30 to 45 days, definitely will see the cost of that. So we'll follow up, I'll send Sarah an email from Castle here.
Okay.
And give it an update from her.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Before, everyone should know that they come and pick up the town tractor, take it to their operation and set up the new equipment. Or set it up for the new equipment. Clearing adding ballast to the tires, the offset, the way to the. And then Bob and Nick will both receive onsite training.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you very much, you know, on that. And because this is tied into trimming and the notice that we sent out to our residents, I have to say thank you to those who actually started working on their corners. And there's a number of people who have done very nice jobs. And then others are still, you know, hanging out there, they have not done anything. But there are several people who have, families that have actually are homeowners that have begun to trim off the things off the corners of their properties, so making it a little easier. And I think that at the end of, by the time when we reach, I think when we reach July, because we gave them up until July 1st, that, you know, we move into perhaps individual letters then just to directly to those instead of a general letter, maybe it's going to have to go to those people. Or we just begin trimming, I mean, that's something we'll have to talk about. You know, but everybody got a letter, and every single, you know, property owner got a letter. But, you know, I don't know if we need a second letter individually written to those people who still have them that are extremely out on the streets or not. So, you know, we could think about that during this one. So anyway.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, please.
Sam mentioned something about a mower being picked up from here.
Tractor.
No, not from here. The mower being picked up, it wouldn't be from here.
The tractor.
The tractor was picked up.
Oh, from here to put it there.
Yeah.
Until it came to operation.
Okay, and they're bringing it back repaired?
Yes, I don't know what they're bringing back.
Anybody have any idea what that's going to cost?
No, that they're putting the new equipment on.
It was in the, all that was included in the price.
It was all included, it was same.
Okay. All right, so then under new business, search for the code enforcement officer. Do we have anything?
Yes.
Were we going on that?
Why not, we're candidate this afternoon in his home.
No, code enforcement, not building commissioner.
Code enforcement, no, I don't.
Building commissioner, we got going, so we don't need to talk about that. We know you're talking about that. But code enforcement officer, anything going on?
I haven't received, did you guys give me a job description? Yeah, we need a job description.
Okay, those, at one time I had sent out those, those, two times I sent out.
Right, and we provided feedback, but I don't know that they ever got final.
Okay, all right.
We have final, a final grade.
All right, okay.
You need a copy of it?
No, we've got copies, we're talking about a final to post. So, okay, so we'll work on that.
That's why I supposed to hear too.
Well, yeah, as soon as we finish it up then, okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, now, community crossings grant applications would be, I think you could begin submitting them July 1st, correct? And they have to be done by the end of July. That's for the first round, no, for the second round of this year, second round. So we have the option of applying at this point in time, or we have the option of waiting and then applying in January. Okay, so Brad was here last month, if you recall, Brad was here last month and he mentions some things to us and said potentially there may be more, you know, money to use if we wait until January, but on the other hand, we do have streets that need work now. So Brad, you want to give us a couple of ideas, words?
I don't, everybody's giving a copy of the proposals.
I sent emails to you guys.
Okay, we got, like you said, the first thing that I would bring up is I can only find, only copy of the effort that was put together to make the list, forget what that's called.
The BZA report?
December of '21, so if it's a two-year thing, it's no longer valid. I need to confirm that with you.
Let me just pass it out, I don't want more trash, save your guys some time. So there's one, one copy, pass it down. So you were probably looking at the package that Don Bellum switched in.
Yeah, and I was looking for something more recent than that, but I could not find it.
And that is here with the package that Bob put together the last year. And you guys did receive the certification from LTAC in December, so you're up to date.
Okay, so. Yeah, we're up to date, our paperwork, yeah, our paperwork is okay.
So that said, you're eligible to apply for a grant that opens up the first July and stays open until the end of July. My experience with the same grant window, the second cycle for Michigan City last year, we applied for the summer application and we received our grant confirmation November 3rd. That's basically passed the agency. And that was just the grant, we hadn't put it up the mid-year. So that's, that's the downside with pulling together a 2024 day two CCMG package. You're basically going to miss the construction window for this season. Given the budget constraints, my recommendation would be to take the 2024 money and roll it into 2025, and that's a bigger package next year. Just looking at the data from last year, PZR reading and even asset management plan, the 24 program is about a half a mile at an estimated cost of $140,000. And then next year's program, 2025, was just under a half a mile at an estimated cost of $135,000. Now, again, that was a snapshot that was completed last fall. And I haven't updated it, we've seen some stabilization in the contract pricing, which is a welcome change from the volatility we had a couple of years ago. But I haven't had a chance to reevaluate the pricing. But my recommendation would be to kind of pool your resources across the two fiscal years and have a bigger program and apply for the January grant, the 2025 day one grant within us. And then as we were listening to Bob, it struck me that there's an option, and I offer an option that you can also buy material, material only. The town would provide a labor, you could buy patch material also as part of the CCMG package. So that would be an opportunity to garner the match and kind of fortify your resources for next patching season. That's not something that I've been involved with simply because we've done street paving for other municipalities, but I know there's a material purchase option. So it'd be a different part of your budget, I would say. But if you could get a match on it, it would be advantageous to look at that.
Would that cut into the CCG general, the application? Is that a separate, is a separate application from that?
No, it's all part of the same.
All part of the same?
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing that I want to offer was Jean mentioned the pickleball court. And not, again, not this calendar year, but it's something we could package as an alternate to the CCMG work for next season. And I, so I got a scene, I'm expecting to need to overlay there's some surface treatment. But what we did with Michigan City for their golf course was as part of the two million dollar paving program, we had an alternate to do the golf cart pass. And we did, can't remember, I'll hand maybe $90,000 for the paving, some in the neighborhood. But again, it's not available for CCMG funding, but it offers another, another piece to entice contractors for a more competitive bid. And those bids were, that alternate, the golf court, feel very competitive, very related. They had share pricing, they had received a standalone project. So that is just something that maybe an added value.
So that would have to be included in the contract that we have with you?
It's included in the contract. It would be part of the package that we bid out to contractors, but it's not part of the package we submit to end up for the grant. So it's, as I said, just an alternate piece. So, and there, there's a lot, there's a lot to, I think, look at for the scope services and with the budget coming up. So what I would offer is, I do come here and visiting with you all, so if you want to table it and have a better idea, if you'd have a better idea at the next almost meeting. But my recommendation would be to go with the 2025 day one grant, pretty much. So bigger package. But anyway, if you'd have any questions, I would also like to answer those now.
Okay. Tom, members have any particular questions?
No, I don't have any questions for you. Thanks.
Joe, with regards to, you know, money, the monies we have, will, for instance, any monies that we have for paving and using as our matching portion of, you know, towards, you know, trying to apply for this grant? The monies we have for this year, we can keep for next year plus get next year's alternate as well?
If we do, if we have contract led by January 1st and we know it's going to be paid in 2025, the monies that was set aside can be transferred to 2025 by incumbents of them.
But we already have to have some kind of an invoice or a bill?
I'd have to have something saying what it's for, you know, have an invoice.
Okay.
But it's a contract.
And is it, so it would be possible for us to be able to do that? To have that money set aside to pay for the paving for next year, to add to that, right then?
But we have to go through the process of doing it comfortably.
Okay.
And I have to get with the account.
Uh huh, okay. Any other comments, questions, no? Okay, what are your thoughts on, you know, what Rev suggested, waiting for, for the January bidding?
I think we should take some time to look at the situation now. I couldn't even find the latest.
PZR.
PZR. So I needed to get a copy of that. Has it, I have information on what was done last year, so we could update it based on that. But then, okay, what are the strengths that we want to work on? I mean, is there anything that we really think we have to do this year before we just push it off another seven or eight or 10 months? So that's, I think we've got time enough to at least take a look at it.
It would be a good idea to take a look at, so we would know what to put in the budget and we're not doing additional appropriations every time we turn around.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be a good idea to start it now. I know the street that's the next block down from me on Burch, but that block is horrible.
Yeah.
So I guess what I would propose is, Diane, you could send me that latest PZR report. And maybe I can meet with Bob and we can talk about what he knows are the worst streets in town and see how things match up. And there could be a small thing that we could do. I don't know, I'm still a lot away from it yet.
No.
Brad, did you mention something last month about maintenance type things, like with the cracks in the streets and that? We've got cracks in the streets now that I have a feeling they're going to open up in a short period of time. I'm not the expert, but.
Right, so that's, that's the other advantage to submitting the CCMG grant every other year. So you can have. So you can have, um, cracks in them as well as asphalt paving.
Uh huh.
So, um, standalone, it's just, it's a lot of effort for not a lot of, uh, interest and, and not a big package. But to your point about this year, um, uh, understanding that that CCG window is only for July, so any matching grant would have to be submitted in July and, and the funding would not be, would not likely be awarded till early November, if that was the case last year.
Yeah, well, actually, we had all worked on the second half of the year.
Sure.
Same time frame. Uh, I think we may be a little ahead of where we are, but, um, the list didn't get it pretty quick. Uh, and work was done late in the year, uh, but we did get it done. So I know that it's possible. But again, I think it makes sense for me and Bob to go through the list and make a recommendation, uh, we can start with.
Okay. Cause it sounds good.
Sure.
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Sound okay, Bob?
He's still there?
He's contemplating it.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions for Brad then today? Nothing? All right, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so you just wanna look at all of it?
I think you're gonna, yeah, that's the consensus to, you know, to, to put some more stuff together. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, next month's meeting is going to be on the, I think, on the ninth. So at least it's earlier rather than later. And if absolutely necessary, we can do, even call an emergency public meeting, you know, and, and make some kind of decision if we really need to earlier, so, okay? All right, um, okay, we've done that. Brad, attorney's report?
Sure, um, I'll give you that, uh, two to the, two ten cases. One thing I wanna address is, seems like you may be further ahead in getting a new building commissioner versus code enforcement.
Yes.
Um, code enforcement ideally is gonna be the person who do the Tennessee standards with me, but until that, well, still, I know board members have been offering, but maybe that's something that the building commissioner should expect or if they're willing to.
Uh, he said he cannot, the, our candidate does not wanna do any of that. Not, not as the code enforcement officer, so.
Definitely, well, I'm, I'm not talking, I'm just talking witness purposes.
Right, okay.
And testify, you know.
Right, 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 uh huh, okay.
So, all right, so with that understanding, you will be board members until we get the.
Okay.
So first, um, four to El Portal, um, we were set for hearing last Friday. Obviously, it's that asking us, you're already in the board. You know, agreed to, to, they keep that hearing and it's, at the moment, continued indefinitely. I think it's appropriate letting the family of workers do more than revisit its time passes.
It's good idea.
Um, so there's nothing set on that at the moment, after we gave them here. On the coming's property, the next hearing is, actually, here, you know, is set for August one. Uh, that's a Thursday at nine thirty. So prior to that, um, I would request that we have an executive session so the full board can talk, we can talk as far as litigation strategy and stuff. Obviously, we'll talk about it at a public meeting. Um, we've got time to do that before August first, but we don't wanna wait either. Um, especially July, we have a holiday month, since we passed pretty quickly.
Okay.
I know the next meeting here is July ninth, um, you know, we targeted something on it before that date. I think that would be, that would be the time then for any other additional prep.
Okay, well then, we'll set, we'll, I'll collect the data from the board members to make sure that, you know, the week that people are around and we'll adjust, you know, to your schedule then, okay?
Right, certainly, yep.
Okay.
And then obviously, there's new, new directions tonight with those selection orders up.
Okay. All right. Any questions to Brad?
No, thanks.
No, okay, thank you very much, Brad. All right, any miscellaneous business to bring up? No? Um, any communications received from anyone else? No? Okay, I haven't gotten anything special, I mean, just general inquiries about things, but nothing special. Uh, public comments?
My lovely, holy, holy God.
Why, yes, so?
Can you tell me a question?
Pardon?
Can I keep, can you tell me Sam, I'm inside the room, I forget about very good word.
Yeah, that's what Jean, Jean's didn't complain.
I, I don't know if it's new to this new microphone, no?
Oh.
I have a question.
That's the only thing that's changed.
Well, we can get a, uh, one additional mic for this guy.
Okay.
And see if that helps. I can look into that.
Yeah, I think it's worth it, so.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Thank you.
For me, Rob?
Pardon?
Hey, Rob, have a question for me about paving?
I'll tell you, Rob.
Okay.
All right, good. Counselants? Nothing? Okay, good. Then that case, I need, need a motion to adjourn? Okay, Richard, move to adjourn. So meeting is adjourned, it is, all right, uh, eight seventeen? Pardon, right? Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.